City Council meeting March twenty seventh, two thousand twenty five. Now call the order. Let's get to the ladies and gentlemen.
I will. Father, thank you that y'all came to come to meet together in the normal time of our regular meetings for special visits to the city. We pray for the wisdom and guidance as we pursue the future of our town. Be with us in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, the reason for this special call meeting is we then hit up and Mr. Brian Young come to talk to the council at the last council meeting about a road that he's wanting the city to take in to the city that goes out to his property that is in the city that's out on Ponderosa Park. I think most all of us have been out there and looked at it. Kinda hard to get it in your head until we went out and looked at it to see the situation of where the road coming in, what they were looking at, and what would need to be done. So, the purpose of this meeting tonight is to kinda, since everybody's went out and looked, to try to come up with some kind of solution as to what's best for the city and best for Mr. Brian to get this project taken care of. I've given you a sheet from Gaddy Shamrock that we just got this today, so it's why we're just now doing it that we just got this this afternoon. And this is actually, if you remember, when you look at the road that goes out Ponderosa Park, that road is twelve foot wide, pretty much. And to take it into a city road, it has to be twenty foot wide. So, you're looking at an additional eight feet on top of what's already there. So, I think what they had initially done was give a cost at the twelve foot.
Twelve foot, I hadn't thought that. Yes, and he took the trail all the way out.
And then he come back and added it, added the eight foot to make it the twenty foot wide road. So, you've got a cost up there, where it was at twelve foot, and then the cost down below is where it would be for widening that out to twenty foot. And then it shows you on the left side there is kinda, I believe what I'm looking at here is a diagram of where the road would go down to. The dots that crosses where Brian's driveway would start, is that correct, Brian? Home is drawing?
I didn't, I haven't seen the drawing either.
I just, that's what I kinda assumed, this is what they did, that this is going in at twelve foot, and then this is where you start.
Yes.
And that's what I assumed just by.
Says five hundred and sixty feet there.
At what, you know.
And that's Murphy Lane up here.
The Murphy Lane, that's the bottom.
Yeah.
And then head down Ponderosa Park, and then that would pay into my driveway where my toilet would take out. Yeah, so I believe that would be right, because that's the wide part of it.
That's kinda what I thought from just looking at that, that's what I thought, that's what they were. So, the question, I guess, is what we need to kinda decide and make a decision on is, do we want to take the road into the city? In the, I guess, we look at what's the benefits to the city, what's the gonna cost, and then what all part is for the city to do. Brian, I think, from what I understand, is you would get everything ready, the road and everything would be ready for the blacktop, and you would do that part, is that correct? Or what, what's your, again, part of what?
I guess the first issue that has to be addressed is the brown pile.
Right, yes.
And I'm just assuming the city, since all that runoff is coming off of Farrelly Drive, that would be something that the city will address regardless of what happens.
Exactly, that's gotta be taken care of, yeah.
So, on that aspect of it, if we're doing the blacktop, I don't care to pay down my line, and then we can call share the whitetop, we can do, I'm open ideas. And like I said, I don't wanna be hard to deal along with, I know that Jeremiah Nicole about coming in by wheels, that's, it's just a bad idea, and I think I expressed that the other night. But it just, it just, it's not a good idea.
Right.
And like Jared said, if it was the only option, then yeah, it would probably be a little more feasible, but it's not the only option, and that's why I was back to Ponderosa Park. So, I guess this, I mean, I don't wanna start throwing numbers, I'd shoot myself in the foot and be paying for stuff that the city, that I think they would be responsible for. But I am on the, chip in on the bill, call share, whatever, I guess we, the other saying, we need to horse trade on this and see who's gonna do what, what you all think's fair, what I think's fair. And go from there, because like March Lots, I don't know, I mean, if it's gonna be a city street, he's always gonna have access on that. So, we need to figure out what's his plans, what's he gonna do, or, I don't know, this is all falling to me, it's I know, I know with you all being city housemen and ladies, that you all have dealt with issues, driveway issues, street issues, tell me, tell me what you all think, again.
Brian, I've heard over there today, is, do you own all the land where the blue sign is, all the way back on both sides of the road, or who, how many people own property on both sides of this street?
The right side going down that road, the front corner is Rodney Johnson's where the apartments are.
On the right.
And then Jared's yard down that fence line, down to the sewer station is Jared's, and then.
Woods, woods.
On the right side, all it is is just a strip of trees. And then it goes to the sewer station where that Farrelly Drive comes down and kinda intersects there in the middle. And then on the right side of that is Will's property from there up the hill. And then on the left side, Bart, uh, what was his name Regina?
So, there's, there's a, there's a pretty well attended with woods, that's somebody else's?
That is Bart, she's friends with David Turner.
Okay.
And I can't, I call him Bart, I can't.
So, there would be, there would be other taxpayers benefiting from this same road, it wouldn't just be you?
Yes, and Bart's paying, I think Bart's been paying city taxes on those lots because it showed, I think, when Tony was there, we pulled the map, but everything on the left side of the road over to that fig is inside the city limits. And I think that's lots that Rob worked and reached on, and then Rob's owned them too.
He was playing, his wife sold them to him.
Yes.
So, the left is somebody all the way back to you?
There's four lots, and I think Bart owns every one of them, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't swear to it.
But on the right, you've got Jared over there on the right hand side going toward up the road?
Yeah, Johnson and they.
Okay. So, there's more than just you, Brian, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, and like, that's what I, that's what I'm expressing, if I paved the road all the way out, and that road is technically, if it's not city, if the city's not gonna claim it, and I'm not even talking to Terry about the county taking it, but if no one's gonna take it, if I'm gonna pave it, and Bart owns the lot to the left that joins his property, I would just assume have control of it, or I can put a gate in there, because my issue is, which you, I'll, I'll be able to come down there, you've seen, once you get down there where the road tile is, there's nowhere to turn around. So, the problem that we have is, they're even gonna turn around in my yard, which I've had a couple do that, and then Sunday Christian and I went to garage, and here pulls a new Chevrolet truck up, and he's like, "Well, I used to live over there on the other side of Drew," and he said, "I just haven't been over here," and he said, "I just drive around," and I'm like, "Well, when you get down there, you see a new house, a new garage, and a driveway, what are you doing out here?" I mean, he got completely out of the truck. When I walked out of the garage, I'm like, "Can I help you?" And he's like, "I'm just out here looking," and he said, "I used to live over there," and he said, "I just haven't been back here." So, that's my issue with where the city's gonna start, stop, because if the road is twenty foot wide, and I can go to my driveway and put a gate, then I'm fine with call sharing on the city side, but if I gotta pay all the way out to the road, then I want the gate all the way out to the road.
But I don't think you could do that, because you don't own that land, it's still a, a road, it's gotta go out there.
But who, I mean, it's still a road, but whose road is it?
Well, it's everybody that touches, it's everybody that touches the road, it's just Bart, I, it's Jared, whoever owns.
Well, it can't be Jared, man, because on that side was five foot more of the country.
Everybody has property that touches it.
The property that comes over to, it would be Rodney Johnson, I mean, it would be where the duplex and stuff is that kinda touches that road.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
So, you couldn't cut them off from having access off?
So, technically, I mean, there's seven people.
Right, and that's, that's, from a city standpoint, what a good thing.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, though, you know, if you, like, if, if, if you did it yourself, it's not gonna allow you to put a gate up in there because if they're being something else.
Okay, okay, so I understand, mate, so I understand that everybody that touches that.
But you could put a gate, so what happens if you put a gate going up to your property? What happens when people drive out and get to the gate, do they have an access to turnaround, or how will they just have to back out?
Well, that person, that person's not on barch lots, backing in barch lots, you turn around, or which Jared, what protects him on the right side is the ditch and a bank.
Yeah.
So, he don't have to worry about them coming in on him.
Well, you could always put a sign, no turnaround, or no, you know, road made in room, or whatever, you know.
But that, I mean, that's one of my biggest, that's one of my biggest issues with all of it, is when people are coming on that, come down there, when they get to the bottom, there's only one place for them to go. Because technically, it's a dead end at my property, because there's a ditch on the right, barch lots on the left, and anything that has barch lots is my property. So, when they get down there, it's either back up, whatever that length was, what's almost six hundred feet?
Five hundred and seventy feet, seventy-sixty.
Or.
Five sixty.
Pull down in my yard and turn around, or come up to my garage and turn around, or stop at Bart's and back to Barch Lot.
But like the way it is right now, you could, if you at this point wanted to put a gate up and blacktop up your driveway, you could do that, correct? I mean, you could do it.
Yes, and my utility pole where I stopped my older utility kilter's went underground from there, I could do that, yes.
But what you're saying is, you're willing to install the covent, if we get one?
Yeah, and I mean, we've got the equipment, if you all are, and I can haul the rock, I mean, I.
And you could prep the road for the twenty foot wide, right?
And you're saying prep the road twenty foot wide?
For whatever they.
Well, the problem with prepping the road twenty foot wide is, is over the years where the water has come off of Murphy Lane and everything else, the road is probably ballyed out, and I shot rain on it, but Jared's been out there, he does dirt work every day, he's probably got what, two foot of belly in it?
Well, what I'm saying though is going up through there to Murphy Lane.
Yeah, that's what's ballyed out so bad, because that, all that wash comes down that road, and just like I was telling Tommy the other night, I had put.
It's gotta have drained it or what?
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna have to build the center of the road back up to get the water flowing down the sides down to the new drain that's put in, or, I mean, really, there's no other way to do it. I mean, there's probably, what, ten, ten racks loads of gravel that people down through there?
If you did, it's probably gonna be all through.
I mean, it's kinda went to the point where it's gone, but I mean, like I said, I'm willing to get, put the tile in, haul the gravel, do, I'll do all the work, the labor, I'll get everything ready, but I don't wanna pay for four thousand dollars worth of rock and then turn around and pay for fifteen thousand dollars worth of blacktop, or eighteen, or whatever the deal come to, and then say, "Here, y'all can have it, come down, turn around in my yard, or turn around in my garage," I don't feel that's fair to me. And I'm not being a vague, and I'm not lying, but my pockets are not, what you say, deep. I mean, I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to survive, I'm trying to fix my place to be as nice as it can be, because it's in the city limits, and I'm proud of, just like I told everyone, I'm proud of James' family.
What was your quote to make it twelve wide if you were gonna have done it twelve wide? What was your quote?
It's all here, it's like.
Right there, fourteen thousand five seventy at twelve foot wide.
It's right here, and then down here is twenty foot wide, but what was the difference?
That's just blacktop cost, that's just.
Twenty-three, one eighty-four.
It's all.
Twenty-three, one eighty-four, twenty.
Cost, if there's more law.
See, that's how we.
What I'm saying is if he's gonna do, he's gonna do work on the rock, oh, we have to take the rock and take your haul.
Just do eighteen foot.
Because that's what your haul is.
Yeah, I don't think the deal went up, so.
The road's been.
We're pulling some out of the whitetop in the park, and I think I really.
We might get into thousands of dollars there, I think we're gonna have.
So, I mean.
Well, the rock ain't that high, it's the bill, the haul bill's what always costs you on the rock.
Well, plus getting it wet, he's saying that it's.
Saying eight grand, eight grand.
They've done a lot of dirt work.
Real close. Really extra eight, eight foot.
What they were just saying, that the road's not, correct, what was you saying about the road?
Well, the road where it's washed so bad over the years, all the gravel's been put on it, which, if it ever went to the left side or the right side and just cut a ditch, it's easy enough to take the crack over, rest the ditches back, put some shock rock in, and be done. The problem is, the two ditches, like what Jared said, the two ditches are up here, and the road is valleyed like this, so when water comes off of Murphy Lane up there, it comes down the right side about halfway down, maybe it crosses the road, and it takes off the gravel and everything from there, but I mean, I could haul probably, what, five loads of threes, five or six. I could probably put four thousand dollars worth of rock on it, get it built back up, and have it ready for Gaddy to pave at twelve foot. And I mean, we might be able to figure that out and get the mower, but the problem is, then you're ditching, if the blacktop and the rocks not up, it's just gonna erode the sides.
What about the other end that has to react, then would that be, is that part, I think what we've got to do is know some true costs here of what we're looking at, and not just the blacktop.
If we're planning on doing that, probably the best thing to do is the next pretty day, I can go up there and block some of the road, and then I can go out ten foot, paint lines, see what we've got, see what it takes to get in between the two, the two lines, and see, I don't have to check the twenty foot. The only thing that I look at is the twelve coming down my road down to the tile.
When I measured it today, it was fourteen, the gravel was already.
Well, I know whenever Regina come out the other night, and she was looking at it, her and Tony, I stepped it off, and right in front of her car, it was like twelve, twelve and a half foot. And that was good gravel, good gravel, and then on the left, it was probably, I mean, I think we said we would add four foot to each side.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there was plenty of room to do that.
Yeah.
So, I mean, yeah, I'm just saying that I could get it ready, I could get it gone, then, or Gaddy's could maybe put a couple loads of dent grates, even Joe Pott told me that on my road. He said, "Brian, your asphalt wheel is X amount of dollars, but I want you to figure in probably another two thousand, twenty-five hundred dollars for dent grade, just if they have to build it up, take it down, widen it out, couple threes, because, and even like that road down here, they wasn't able to put threes on it. They were just gonna do everything in dent grade, because when you start paving, that pulls the threes up top, and it grows your blacktop. So, we insisted they put twos on this road down here just because it was a new, a new road. But now like my road up there, you could probably get my dent grade, just starting up and dent grading down with it.
Yeah.
Just don't go as far.
It just don't go as far, and it's gonna take a few more loads, but at the end of the day, if you've got dent grade, I mean, you should narrow it out to twenty foot wide, maybe it'll look like something. But still, I don't know if it'll be enough for what Gaddy's needs, I don't want to say, "Yeah, I'll do this," and then Gaddy's come back and say, "No, Brian, you need ten more loads of dent grade, you got four hundred dollars a load."
That's my point, is right now, we don't know the true cost, all we're looking at is what the blacktop would cost, once the road is ready to be blacktop, correct? But we've also gotta figure that water sewer problem's gotta be fixed there also.
And see, like, getting the ditches up here, I know that high pressure ten inch line, we just happened to find it up there that comes across Jordan's property.
Yeah.
We thought it was up there where the old Oklahoma used to sit, why have the doctor down there digging? And the next thing I see, he picks up a corner, "Well, this is the ten inch high pressure sewer line that's right in front of my house that everybody thought was up there where the trailer was."
Like cuts all the way across it, from you all the way across.
To Rodney's field.
Rodney's field, and runs down, and, yeah.
So, that's kinda been the whole issue with that whole mess, nobody really liked the sewer, nobody else was there, so I mean, I now ask Jared to dig up the ditch lines myself, just because I don't know what's up through there, right, I know on Jared's side, there's a fiber line and a phone line that comes down that tree line, which I can get dual channel mark pad, that's easy enough, but now the water and sewer, we can shoot from the hip, the whole time, because, I mean, Les and them were up there whenever we were, we were making the tree out before they put my new water in, and if I would have one more push of the track out, we would have a big mess, we would have had a ten inch high pressure sewer line going off, because nobody had a clue that it was within a hundred foot where we were at, they thought it was on up, like more behind wheels, and see, I even asked Will, it was like, "I don't ever remember that being put in here," and I mean, wheels been there since, what, seventy?
It was developed seventy-four, I think.
Is that not the line that runs down to the discharge of the lake? That's what I thought it was, I, I knew it was there, but is that not one that? See, I, all I know, Tony, is they told me it's a pipe, that big ground line, that high pressure, and that.
From the old.
And that over there, Jordan's field, that is, is all the time, it's.
From the old trees, yeah.
Yeah.
They're playing that related, same.
And that's maybe whistles, yes.
We don't play dollars many, so.
Man, playing that is fine, nobody knew what was happening, and that's why, like, I don't, like, I don't know where it goes, what's it lead to?
Maybe right back.
Yeah, I don't know, because we go with Miss Jared's house, kinda on the corner, we live between Jared's and garage, but by the way, it is massive.
Big one from low.
I guess probably.
Cut from the box.
Yeah, I mean, I was up the road, Jordan, Jordan, uh, I was looking behind, and I saw that template, and well, it was the real estate map, Realtor's map, that they showed the plot off of, and it showed that line running across middle, and those lots at that time were growing up as high as the ceiling, as thick as it could be, you couldn't see nothing. I told the Realtors, "I'm interested," but I won't, don't, I don't have a bush out of the off, so I can see it, I don't know where this line's at, and they wouldn't do it, so I just let it go, but. The Realtor handed over the map, whether it was accurate, uh, I don't know.
Seems to be.
Looking at, trying to look at both ways, okay?
Over in his pantry.
What, did you think about, did you think about the road before you built up there?
The poorest thing.
Yeah, that was the first thing I done.
The poorest thing.
This question's been on the table.
It should be hard to determine.
When I.
My two table located.
That was the first thing that I started working on, who owns this road?
But if you don't know.
And like I said, I mean, and I think Regina's asked everybody, hey, guys, let's get together, let's look at this, let's come up with some kind of, who owns the road, where's it at, is it on these, is that five foot? This has been an ongoing issue, and I mean, I asked Les when he was up there the other day, because Regina, I think she was making vacation with the Florida, and I asked Les when they were moving my, my line, I'm like, "Okay, Les, you see," when, I mean, when they brought their equipment down that road, it was literally mud that deep. I mean, it was almost knee deep in one spot where the water crosses the road, that's when I had to call Gaddy's and get loads of rock and stuff down there, just so I could get from point A to my property. And then, once I got to my property, I had to start dumping rock again, because all my stuff was new cover. And I mean, like I said, I'm willing to call share, I mean, I would want to win right now, I'd say, "Okay, here's what I'll do, I'll put the tile in, y'all furnish the tile with rock, I'll do the labor, all the rock, and I'll put five thousand dollars toward the blacktop from my utility pole out to Murphy Lane, that's the starting point. I would be willing to do that, I'll pay five grand in all money, and you all tell me what you will do, and if it's satisfactory, we'll sign off on it, if it's not, I'm gonna say, "I'd like to come," let's start all over, and I mean, that's all I know to do, Barry, I've because, like I said, I don't wanna sign up for painting the road, making twenty foot wide, and saying, "Okay, here you go."
It's like you cutting ditches and everything.
I'm not a ditch cutter, I'm, I'm a tile installer.
Well, this ain't like you installing a tile, but cut a, cut a ditch.
Clamber.
Yeah, that jack and all, crazy, nice for minutes.
You know, when I come over and look there, you know, I was looking at the tile where it comes down to it, I didn't pay any attention going on, on that fellow's property across the road there. Where's it go out?
Right here it is, very efficient.
Well, see, and that's the problem that Jared's having now, because when I was fixing my yard, he was gonna put a drain tile down the front of his yard, because he's getting so much washed there, and he's got rocks, and he was gonna put a tile, and I had hot soled that hole, and I said, "Well, we can just cut through, and I can bring it over there, and you can get his issue fixed, and maybe try to keep this yard from washing." I mean, the water that comes down through there, and Jared can attest to it, it's out of control, and I don't know how honestly we're ever gonna fix it. I mean, I think even my road tile, I'm looking at probably at least a three foot tile, maybe a four, and then where it kinda meanders from the sewer station, way up down Jared's property, and then comes under the fence, over the mine, and for that hole, I had to dig it out because the drain was stopped up, and was running over the road and washing the backside of the tile out, and that's just the bank there, because like I said, I don't wanna go down there and have to spend seven, eight thousand dollars replacing the tile and not knowing what I'm gonna get into, and at the end of the day, I'm at all this money, and I've still got Ponderosa Park, that's a dang young muck hole that I'm hauling rock every time it rains, just to get into my house. So, and I mean, and like I said, I don't, I don't mean to be hard to get along with, I'm not trying to be difficult, and I'm willing to take money out of my own pocket to help, but I've also gotta look at my finances, I mean, when you spend what I spent on my house, and then I'm still looking at an asphalt wheel, I'm still looking at this, I'm still looking at that, and it's like, ooh wee, this, uh, this really slows the land down, I mean, I'd like to mark a vacation off the board, because somebody's gotta pay it, and I mean, I'm the only one there. Where is your property coming, coming back toward Murphy Lane? Well, from the tile where the water drain is, where's your property line at, like, how far? See, I don't know, Tony, I'm, I think the creek, the center of the creek, down even behind Bart, and then my other farm that Shannon and I had before we separated, that was on Brandon and Brittany, I'm pretty sure that property lines are all down the center of the creek, all the way down to what, to property that I have now that I bought off Tyler, and then my, the property that joins Jordan in the back, 'cause he comes over the hill from Point, and then it goes to Jeff Hoovers, and then Jeff puts all the way around down to Ruby's. And I think, just by the plates and everything that I've seen, the center of the creek, or one side of the creek's mine, and the other side's somebody else's, and, like I said, I've never been one to say, "You're over only five foot," I mean. But the center of the creek, you're talking about where the drain tile went up to the road? That's what I'm assuming is my property line, yes. But about where that drain tile is at? That's what I think, Tony, and like I said, I wouldn't, I wouldn't bet a hundred dollars on it, because I think it was a hundred dollars.
Right.
Well, see, we, I don't, I don't know if we can do anything beyond wherever the, you're, want to hit your property line, that's, and, and I don't know where your property line is. Well, and see, the only issue in which, the only issue that I have with that is, okay, it's fine if the tile's over on me four, five foot, the problem is, the drainage problem is coming from a city street where it's paved and ditched, and it's dumping on my property.
Right.
That would be my only issue with that, and like I said, I'm not gonna stand here and fight and argue over you're, you're doing this mine, I'm either doing that mine. I'll go down there and fix it the best I can, and if it causes problems, so be it, you know, be back from your side, and like, it's, and I don't wanna have to say it on my behalf to not sound like I'm being a jerk, because I'm not, I know all of you all, I've talked. I know all of you, all I've talked to all of you, I, I hope you know that I'm sincere and. I just want the road fixed and I'm willing to chip in on it. And you have to understand from my perspective. Um, I don't have a hundred million dollars set in the bank. If I did, it would be an issue. I pay the road, so you know what? Thanks for your time. I, I love being here. I want to help. Well, I want to help if we can, you know, we just have to figure out what we can do and. Uh, like Regina said, we really didn't know what the, the complete cost is going to be, or at least have a pretty good estimate, including the rock and all that. Because this is just blacktop. And I know you're going to say you would, uh, do the work. But I still don't have the, you have a rocker still to take the gravel. And that's the issue, I mean. How long?
Five.
Five. It's five, this says it's five sixty, yeah.
Plus whatever the term.
But you know, you're talking about the road having to be fixed too, uh. I guess. When you talk about this thing, that the whole road is kind of, it's kind of holed out just over years of. Of neglect. I mean, it's, it's neglect. Because at one time the ditch is on both sides. You can see them up there Rodney's, you can see them on the other side. And just over time where no one has done anything with it and they just let it go, let it go, let it go. It's got to a stage where it's a road in the middle of the road. Which like I said, I don't care to buy the gravel, the threes and then put dent straight over it. I can take the five thousand and I'm donating toward that. I'm sure five thousand dollars worth of rock will go a long way. I mean, that's eleven, twelve. That's twelve price loads, actually probably thirteen. If you're hauling, because I mean Jared, he hauled twenty-five tonne at what, three fifty or three sixty a load? So I mean, with, if I told Jared, okay Jared, if you want to haul this rock, I'll pay for it. Well, I average to three seventy-five a load, and I think that's what, uh, Stephen Miller hauls it for me for. And if he goes to Perkins, he gets it for three fifty a load, Gaddys is three seventy-five. So we're looking at fifteen loads at three hundred and seventy-five a load, fifty-six hundred dollars. And I would think thirteen loads would be more than enough rock to get the, the road level, raised. And wide enough for Gaddys to work with. And what about the ditch you left there? Which if you bring the road up enough and get it above, it would just kind of be a free flow. And I mean, I could take our big track hole and pop ditches down through there. And I, I can't guarantee the wall here what it's going to look like because like I said, I'm not a ditch man. And that may be something Gaddys can take their draver down there. They can maybe roll the ditch off the side. And I don't know if we're talking about a V ditch or just a natural drain ditch. I don't know. I mean. That would just be something, once we got up there, got the rock built up to grade, shot grade to make sure it was above. What's on the outside, then we can start. Because I know my ditch on my driveway, everybody's been in my driveway. I'm waiting for Gaddys to actually get the rock on it. And then I'll start bringing dirt in and I'll form my ditches down that right side to go down to the tile that we're talking about. Because I just kind of had to let it go because I don't know how much rock Gaddys is going to add. And I don't want to cut the ditches off the gravel and then I add another three inches of dent straight. And then put three inches of white top on it. And then my ditches are six, six inches below my curb. So I'm going to let them get paved and then I'll bring either our mini or the skidster or something and I'll start working the ditches back through the blacktop. To make them look like something. And that's probably what I would do with that road. If I'm going to have to travel down it every day, I would treat it just like it was mine. And try to fix it the best I could, make it look what you know it can do, keep it from washing, all those good things. But just shooting from the hip, I'm kind of like Jared, I mean. You're looking at what, fifteen loads for?
Calculated.
It calculated fifteen loads and that's putting what, four inches?
Eight inches.
Eight inches. So I mean, that's more than. That enough. So I mean, the five thousand that I'm willing to put forward, I can do that, like what Pat said. I'll take that five thousand. If you all buy the tile, I'll pay for the rock and get the road out where I think it's suitable. And then you all take care of the paving and the building with Gaddys. I don't care to do that. But I just want to know that at the end of the day, the roads want to get fixed and I'm not going to do all this for nothing. And then it come to a degree where it's forming grains and everything that I've done is right back down the creek. And I'm right back to square one. Back up here fussing and arguing about grains issues. And then like I said, not only that, Jared can attest of the water that comes down in front of his driveway, his road and his ditch that really needs. Something done to it, but I mean, it's, I don't know what you do. Like you said, when you start paying for this stuff out of your pocket, and I know all these well, you've been around and you build houses, you've been around construction. You've ordered rock, you've, you've done things like this. And it's not what it used to be. I mean. Stuff costs a lot of money now and it's harder for. For somebody just to keep forking, forking, forking and not know what the end of the game is going to be. Yep.
So when, when that was developed out there, is Murphy's, who put that road in, you think?
Regina, I have, I come from Mifflin, Kentucky. I come from Mifflin to Redsmun to here.
When they cut the subdivision of the Murphy family, cut it up and it was sold. At that time, it was nothing but a gravel road.
But much of gravel.
Wasn't much of a gravel road. And then after the fact. They come in later and chipped and ceded, the county did, all the way from where the drug tax place is. And then there was a couple of fellers running against each other for magistrate. When one of them filed, before one of them filed, the one that was in, black topped it to. The other one's driveway there.
And I'm wondering like, what was.
But the blacktop is out through there was the camp that put out with that.
What was the purpose of the road going in there, where it's at?
Well, a pump, because it was part of that subdivision. Because those lots going, that he's talking about went right down inside of.
But there's other lots.
And it was actually always a road there. It was on that old farm and that was the reason they cut those lots up. Because there was an access that went in there to go to what he bought.
So that started that. See, that was my question, why if there's a road put in there, why wasn't there not roads put in?
Because when I was a kid, that was, that was the way that you accessed that back there because. Before Tyler's family ever bought it, there was no trailer set back in there.
You see, that's what I didn't understand the other day, because you say when nine one one had to put those signs up.
They had to have a, a note, a name for nine one one to be able to find property.
So, so when I'm thinking about that, I mean. If my driveway down on the down, I mean, it's as long as what this road is. They didn't name that road. So I mean, somebody had to take ownership of it to say, this is a road. We have to have a sign here because if nine one one calls. You, I mean, my road could have easily been to Murphy Lane.
The developer would be who, would own the road, whoever owned all that property would be. If that, if you're the developer, they would, they would be the one on the road also.
He had a name, but I don't know what it was back then. I was seeing back then, I don't remember. What we call Ponderosa Pike or whatever. That lane that went down through there had a name that was on the platte. For the original farm when it was cut up.
Was that Murphy's?
That's Murphy's that cut it up, I think.
That's what I'm saying, whoever developed.
But I have no idea what the name of the road or anything.
Because they own the land. They put the road in, so they, they own it. No, the city don't own it, county don't own it. Whoever put that. Whoever did that. It's no different to go down to Lily Creek and when Ralph Rowan did that, they developed all that. They were the owners. Of all those roads going out to there until either the county took them in, you know. So I'm just, that was my point is.
Well, I figured, to me, it looks like it was taken in whenever the. City limits was, or the, was taken out past there because. I don't know when that park was taken in because at one time it come across the back of, back corner of my farm.
City limits did.
Yeah, and then later that other's been taken in. So it was taken in with whatever that was at that time.
Well, see, I told Regina that too, when I was with the electric company. We were going to try to get street lights and have all our annexes into the city because it helps on your insurance, it helps on the water, it helps on everything. And I had, everybody down through there talked to him, but like, yeah, let's put city street lights, let's adopt this, everybody go in the city. And then when I talked to Bart, which him being from, I think, Chicago, I think's where his family, he's like. I just seem not have city street lights. He said, I've lived in that my whole life. So that's what I told Regina. And his wish is, I just kind of like said, you know what? I'm not going to make this like Will. I'm not going to make one man. I had to please everybody else. I mean, he's got as much to say so. As everybody else. If everybody would have been forward, we would have adopted all of that back when I was with the electric company. They would all win city limits all the way down to Ruby's place, honestly.
Yeah.
Because everybody wanted street lights. I know Tim's wife, they get out and walk during the night. Sydney wanted lights, we wanted lights, uh, which Rudy, he works with the city, he was good with it. Everybody was good with it except for.
Except for Bart.
For Bart. And I understood what Bart was saying. He's like, because I went to him and I asked him, I'm like, Bart. I talked to the city, we can annex this in, we can get city street lights down through here, like this place, and he's like, Brian, I don't mean to be. I'll, I can't remember what the word he used was. He's like, I was a cop in Chicago, I think. And he's like, I just seem not have lights. And I'm like. So I'll make it be here. And you dropped it because like I said, I wouldn't make him make it. It's like, I would make Will make for loving him. And I wouldn't make Bart make. I say, well, you know what, everybody else wants it, let's do it. That's just not the way you do. That's not how you believe in.
Well, I've got a better question. If to get the twenty foot, it has to come over four barts, is that going to be fine?
I think that easement out there there's thirty anyway.
Probably.
You see, I don't know, the easement, I don't even know if it's on my deed. I don't know if it's on those lots. See, that's what I'm saying.
It was on the original platte. I don't know what it was or how wide it was, but.
I mean, I can have Tim pull, I can go have Tim maybe pull the original platte and see what the easement. I know like where the stakes are written from Jared's and my fence row. Over to the stakes that I had the pictures of. I've never measured it. I'm going to assume that's probably somewhere thirty-five or forty foot. Get it big, real close. Well, couldn't we go to PVA's office and look at the platte? I mean, shouldn't that be? Whoever developed that had to establish how wide that was going to be, right? You would think so, Tony. So should that be on record at the PVA's office? Tim should have ever found it. Which, see, the night when we looked at the PVA map. It showed, which that's what Jared, we were talking about that. That actually shows that coming down my property and then turning. Back out on Pharaoh's Drive. Remember us looking at that picture?
We think it was on the street. We think it was on the street. Ponderosa don't. But there's actually supposed to be a road. Up that tree line on my side of the fence, the original Pharaoh's flat. And that's for the access for the back two lots where my house sits. But it never was developed because the city person owns the lot.
So see, that's all new information there. That's the first time I've ever heard that because it shows.
It looks right there side to side of us.
Yeah. So see, that's all, that's the first time I've ever heard that. So I mean, maybe we do need to start with Tim's. Maybe we need this guy to answer.
I, I think there's a lot of unknown that's going to have to be cleared up before. Knowing how much terrain you've got on the side of the road that's already there, making sure you're not getting in on somebody.
Jared said he's out of reasonable play of Pharaoh's and the road if you're in Yelkitty. There's somebody else looking. I'd like to look at it. I like you, I like to look at it too. At least that will get that knocked out where. We know where the lines are. You see, that's the first time I've heard that. That's all.
I thought there was another road that went up through there because the way they cut those lots, it was years ago.
So if that's the right way, does that mean that Ponderosa Pike is not hooked to Jared's or? Do they not have to say something?
It ain't hooked to Jared's name.
And it's not hooked Will's name. Because see, if they're claiming this five foot easement.
It actually, it actually.
Who's paying the taxes on the five foot easement?
Exactly.
Who's paying those taxes on that five foot easement that goes all the way around that property? Somebody needs to be paying them. If we're going to claim them, just like if I claim the road. I'll pay taxes on the road, whatever its value is, put it on the tax bill. That's the little ify things.
Yeah, you can't tax on the road. You can't tax on the road.
But I'm saying if I had to blacktop it and the city said, we don't want it, it's yours, if it's not connected.
We can't give it to you. It's not our road. It's everybody that's connects to that road's road out there.
Yeah, that's the hypothetical part.
It can't be like in an individual's road. It's got to be whoever, you know, like if the city took it in, it would be a city street.
Right.
The county would own that. If county could be related, but nobody can take it in. And if anybody that's got access to it, that's why you shouldn't be getting it all the way through there because you're blocking out other people that got access. To it because they wouldn't go out there, right? They make sure.
Yeah, it makes a, yeah, it makes a lot of actually, I don't know the words.
My house sits on eight, six, four, three. And here's Pharaoh that comes down, really the point. Say, on the foot easement, go put this fence line right next to the edge of this five foot border here. Which that was the access six and eight, which is where my house sits. But since it's all been needed, one, this road's never been developed.
Okay, where's Ponderosa Pike?
Right here against this five foot border, right on this side.
So you're saying there's a road between your property and Ponderosa?
It's never been developed.
But there is, it's showing one on there.
Yeah, in between Ponderosa, you got the five foot border, then you got the twenty-seven foot street and then my property. So Jerry bowled them lots that just kind of, well, there's. Back when Anthony or some other.
Yeah.
They bought all four together, so there was no need for this street.
So back to this five foot border, is that in Will's name?
I can't answer that.
It's done there, it's what I'm always, it's done there.
Well, if you've got an easement, it's got to be listed on a deed. I mean, if there's an easement, it's got to be on a deed. So, I mean, that's.
Well, they're talking about the five foot border was kept.
And the easement.
No, they need some.
It's a border, it's not a problem. Yeah, but that's what Will can say, or Jared, if anybody around this.
So who owns that five foot?
I mean, like these lots.
It's done there.
So where does that?
Will, yeah.
My house sits here.
Will and, the Will pursues it.
Can I explain it to y'all?
Yeah, there you go. Thank you.
That is reserved with the subdivision, that's part of the restricted covenant. And whenever someone bought a lot. There's kind of a contract among everybody that owns property that that is left as a barrier.
Five foot between.
That's right.
You don't build up to it.
Well, I don't know about that, but it's left reserved, kind of like street reserved, the barriers reserved. And when you buy a lot there, you're, you basically are contracted that you can't cross that. Because that's just the, you know, that's just part of what you're buying your lot for. Now, someone said maybe people have been crossing, I don't know.
Yeah, there's at least two times it's been crossed.
Nobody, nobody filed suit, but it actually is supposed to. Like, at the birthday.
Right next to his house, they went all the way up through and over and they're tied in Murphy Lane.
We ran into that at Bernard's Stays at one twenty-seven, about three foot.
Then you go around the circle and get the corner, it goes.
It's all about my head and my paper.
They just keep track of it and don't even put that. But they are, they are.
But it's showing this. Is, that's twenty-seven foot or twenty-two, I think.
Twenty-seven, I think.
And that's the, well, it should have been a road up here.
It's a competition sits right here.
But it's not showing it. Oh, so this is.
Yeah. But it's never been developed because the same person owns all four of these lots.
So what if Rodney wanted this access to come in the back of his land here? Where's Brian's? Where's Brian's?
The Brian's sits about nine and a half in there. On Ponderosa. Here's Murphy Lane, which is farm running back in. Murphy Lane comes back through here, Ponderosa turns, comes right back here to Brian's.
But this, this, I guess what we're getting at is we still don't know how wide Ponderosa was.
That's on Murphy's farm, but.
So you don't really know how much foot you've got on each side of the road. Correct? Is that?
Yeah, this is on Pharaoh's side. I don't really know if it's on.
Well, see, that's what me and Andy got to do that those days when I thought you made your case, like I remember that two time. The fence, and I wanted this side of the fence, but that was just a heated conversation. And it was, he said, she said, that we had to get the bottom of it, because that's when I'm just like, listen. I'm just listening to what I've been told by the council, and, or not by the council, but by city officials. And that's how that conversation, I mean, it got completely out of hand, so. And that's why I'm glad there's there, and I'm glad that you all have went and looked, do you know what's going on, and?
Only in that pretty despite I'll be showing.
Well, we need to get, I guess, flash from the other side.
The city council making.
The road there too, so we know where Bart's place is, I mean, where his lines are, you know. I mean, we're assuming it's certainly wide, we really love the road.
That original Murphy.
Ponderosa Pike. I guess that's the most, I don't know, if he would pull it tomorrow and have him run it down. And, I mean, he might, he may have a simple explanation on it, I don't know.
Whenever you get there, or you know, there'll be people studying it.
You go.
I'm just confused now with what, how, how do we know how far we can bet? He can go from the road.
Was the plaque, is the plaque saying how wide? Well, I'm just saying, it's maybe wooden fence. I and Jared's fence, or the fence that runs down Ponderosa Pike, wouldn't that be the edge of the five foot border? It would, I don't know. I mean, it now has to be, doesn't it? I don't know, but I mean, if the border's there, the fence could be right on the border, I don't know.
Yep. No, I mean, that's why.
Everything on the other side of the fence would be the board, is what you're saying, the five foot. No, because that puts it over on down up right there on the.
You'd have to get the plaque, to the county clerk's office probably, where it's all laid out. And on that, you'll see, yeah, where the lots are sold off, and there'll be a remainder around there. Reserved, they'll say something about reserved, or whatever, and that's your barrier. And it actually falls in the hairs, you know, but. It's kind of.
It's part of the Poffoyle Farm or the Murphy Farm?
If somebody went through it, I don't know.
Would be.
Is that, where was Bonnie Lane, was that, was that part of it, Bonnie?
That's in the Wayne's shop, and the new house.
That's in the old area there.
I don't either.
Drew, I don't think he bought it.
The new places, the city had to get the sewer somewhere. So they brought the sewer down to the corner of Bonnie. Got permission, they agreed, whatever deal was made, when it was crossed over, to drop down into gravity, to the pump station at the house, so they dropped that border of the sewer.
We have a problem from down in there.
So they pumped it to the corner of their shop, it grabbed it down to the pump station.
So I guess the next way to end the road on the other side of Jared's, if he technically wanted that to be blacktop for his driveway up to that five foot border around, the city's kinda married to blacktop that, since they blacktop every other road.
Well, I don't want to say I'm no county attorney, but the city or the county doesn't have to do anything just because a road is taken into the system. The county or the city does not have to blacktop a road just because it's part of the county road system. You look at, you look through Russell County, some of the county roads are gravel, some are blacktopped, some are chipped and sealed.
I got some to move.
Some I do nothing. You know, but it's, it, there's, there is a, there's no obligation for a road taken into the city to do anything to it. That's not saying it should be, but there's no legal, no legal requirement that we have to maintain anything uh, to any standard, just because it's taken into the road system.
Well, what is this ordinance?
This ordinance, if this ordinance taken this road, I drove out, it's got a blue sign. Back when we were putting nine one one in, a blue sign in a private road, a green sign in a county road, or a public road. It's had a blue sign, I don't know who, did you put the blue sign up?
Somebody was covering my lobby.
Huh?
It, all the signs was there.
Somebody, okay, somebody's designated this as being a private road. And it was put there just for the real purpose of, anyways, is to find where it is, in case somebody's out there. So now, that's what that's for, but once it would be taken into the city system, so to speak, there would be a green sign there. But that, and I, I, you know, I hope it gets blacktopped for inches thick, but there's, there's no legal, just because you take it in, there's no legal requirement that it be put in any kind of condition. Now, when the county used to take roads in, we would say to somebody, Curtis Laura, you know, put some blacktop on it, and then we'll take it in. Or there'd be a developer, you know, put some blacktop on it, we'll take it in, then we'll probably, it was a matter of patching it up, you know, for years, you know, to keep it kinda going. But uh, that's about all, you know, that's the least that should be done. But as far as uh, you know, if we're probably over J V's, we had so many, we're on the tape. Uh, over J V's, we uh, there were so many grounded roads in the county system, there weren't a lot of blacktop roads. Now, we're doing better, cause there's more people moving over there. But uh, there's no requirement that it be a blacktop road uh, or in any particular state. It's a, it would be a shame if you, if the city let a road get, you know, mowed. I wouldn't want to live, you know, we have, we have more pride than that. So.
Well, I didn't know that about the different covenants and the road signs.
The blue signs are private roads, and they're there because of the nine one one.
I didn't know that either. I knew it, but I thought that was a green sign when I looked at it.
Color line.
Well, I am.
You just see the sign, didn't you, kind of?
I could see the sign.
Hey, this is a sign, this is a road, the trailer was.
I didn't know that was a difference.
I didn't either.
When we did the nine one one system, like fifteen, twenty years ago, or whatever it was, every street had to have a name, private or public. And uh, you know. I think you go down to Josh Markham's house, does he not have a blue sign back there somewhere?
I don't know, I just buy a can of fire in the road.
So it's, it's, it's complicated, you know, I mean.
So it's like Murphy Lane at one time.
Yeah.
Was actually a private road.
Murphy Lane is growing, I grew, grew up there this morning.
It was ended out, it was took in, sometime, it became, and it's a green sign.
But the county used to take a road in when it was worked on, and I'm not saying it didn't contribute, you know, the county didn't, but uh, that's usually, it's supposed to be some kind of shape, you know. Down here in Lily Creek, for instance, of course, that's kind of high octane down there, you know, they blacktopped that, and they took it into the county system.
And then see, which, where Brooks had chipped and sealed so far down, Ponderosa Pike too. That was another reason that I asked, okay, Brooks, if he chipped and sealed it fifteen years ago, or whatever.
Well, here's another thing, it gets complicated, Brian. A, a, a city and county can get by with maintaining a road, you may not have an easement to it, and it may not even be dedicated, or that people use it as a public passageway. You can put gravel and blacktop on it and not be in trouble, because it's used, you know, by the public to use. And a lot of our roads are that way. You know, because I probably, I wouldn't want, you know, probably hanging our roads, the county don't have easements for them, they're just always used that way. And uh, the pig pass for blacktop, or put gravel on it, you know, and they just keep going and going, because they're public passageways. Uh, so, that's another thing. It's, it's a very interesting area of law.
Well, what is establishing that the city street has to be twenty feet wide, is that a city ordinance?
That was a, actually, county roads had to be thirty feet wide, I don't know how wide city streets are supposed to be. But when we would get an easement, most of our easements were fifteen feet from the centerline of said road. So this, that'd be real wide easement there where you are. So you drop, we're down the middle of the road, and it'd be on the side of this, you know, that you would have to, you know, have to be dedicated. Now, what that would do to Jared, and Rodney, Rodney Johnson, and Bart, who would be is, you know, as far as I'm concerned, that would be, if you started building a road on, I should want it, but it might be if it's that wide.
But that allows for ditching everything.
That's true.
That's not thirty foot of blacktop.
That's correct.
It allows for ditching and utilities, I guess.
That is correct.
Yes.
You're exactly right, it's not just people, no.
Cause that's like an R C C, we always ask for thirty foot utility easement. That's where, I mean, we literally need a foot wide for a hole with two wires. But you're asking for fifteen foot roadway on each side to come in and cut trees back to solve.
You're exactly right.
A, a wire that's literally three eighths wide.
That's room for a ditch, you want to dump the telephone ditch that used to be, do a broadband, you had to have room to dig along sides sometimes, you don't.
And see, Bill County has a line down the Jared's side, down the fence road.
Very cable.
It's a very cable down.
That's why I support the call and see where the damn thing is before you start digging.
Yeah, that's definitely eight one one called, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it seems like there's a lot of things we don't know yet.
Well, yeah, there is, there's, I think there's definitely things that we've got to find out, you know, and that's how much room we have on each side of the road, or what, what.
I'll call Kim, I'll send you two hours on the phone with Tim Popwell, he's gonna be down the first thing in the morning to get flats. And it's probably as soon as they open up the dig area.
So when we find that out, we'll get that figured out.
So those lots.
And then, I think we've got to have an overall cost. And some kind of estimates of how much travel, how much it's gonna cost, what has to be done to the road, because you can't just look at, you know, it's twenty thousand dollars, and then you come up with fifteen more thousand dollars.
What's the name of this, what's the name of this development? It's not, it's not uh, Pharaoh's, it's, it's, what is the name of this, for these, is there a name for these lots?
I don't know.
No, it's just. Ponderosa Pike, it's, when I bought it, Ponderosa Pike was no different than Murphy Lane, Bonnie Drive, or anything else.
But then, are the lots planted off though, like?
Yes, the, we should fix it, that idea last week when I was there. It showed the stakes that were written to the right, left, each stake is a lot.
But is there a plaque in the county clerk's office where you can look down, and you can see the, your, your lot drawn out so many feet, this, this, that?
It should be.
That's what Cam's gonna pull in the morning.
Cam's gonna pull all the plaques and everything, but.
He needs to pull them for those lots too, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
For the ones.
The other thing, I can't remember the property he's got. That's what me and Mitchell was talking about, was whether the, that was the Poffoyle Farm, or if that was part of the Murphy Farm. And I can't remember how that lot, how that come out. But I almost it may have been part of the Murphy Farm, but I don't think so. I think it was, because it was almost landlocked, if they hadn't cut that Ponderosa Pike stretch down to there, would've almost landlocked that property.
The property plan?
That he owns. If they hadn't been a, a.
If they hadn't put a road in there?
Yeah.
Then that's the reason for the road, I would say.
Probably. And I'm guessing with where, just guessing, from me being in real estate, where you see the steel post that drove in over on Bart's side, I would say that is the true corner, and that's how wide it was open to.
That's what I think, from the fence to the fence post.
To the fence post, should be the.
It's, I would say, that's, it, it's at least thirty, maybe forty.
Who surveyed for Bart's to think about it?
See, Cliff and, Cliff and Brad Charles is naming, I just looked.
Is that survey recorded? Lot times are recorded, lots.
Well, it all began down in the corners that was from the original survey.
If it's recorded, yeah.
Well, it had to be recorded, it was the Murphy Farm that was cut up into the subdivision.
Yeah, but I'm saying whoever surveyed those lots on.
And the Poffoyle too.
Brian, is your, is your deed a lot number something, or is it a meets and bounds?
It's a, this state district, or even one of them deals.
For a dogwood once more?
Yeah, yeah, mine, mine has never been lots.
I got you.
Now, my other, my other place on Murphy Lane, that Ray and Debbie Mann had, it was all lots, and I've got, I, Debbie gave me the original maps for those lots down through there, cause I think there was
Several.
Thirteen or fourteen lots, just in my three eighths, half mile, and I own them down that road. There were several lots, I'm, I can't even remember how many it was. But when you pull the map of the actual map itself, like what Tim's got, it shows that on all of it with no subdivision, no subdivision anywhere. But on the deed, it shows like lots seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three.
The plaque that's recorded from the Murphy.
Yes, and that was from the Murphy, that was the Murphy farm sale. And they bought that at auction, and I don't think Ralph Roy did handle that. If I'm not mistaken.
Well, it's cut it up into lots, and then it was stolen to your tracks. Or you could combine as many lots as you want to. I think they combined.
I think you're right.
I think they combined them, because.
It's part of the Murphy, then that property has to show on the plaque that's recorded from Murphy, if it was part of the Murphy farm.
His, uh, not his farm, not what we're talking about. If it was, yeah, but he said that his is all meets and bounds.
And see, I'm gonna say.
I wonder if it's not part of Murphy.
If they just pulled it down to.
We're going to get the lot of the Murphy farm.
The big district regional farm, the Murphy farm, it probably honestly just goes down to the creek where this property starts.
Pretty sure that's where it was.
Would be my guess, if I had to guess, I would say that the Murphy farm probably does take in Ponderosa Pike down where my property line starts.
Yep.
And then everything on that side is what Drew, what I bought from Tyler, and then what Jordan's got on the other side of me is probably coming from the other way, that's not associated with anything on the Murphy farm on that side.
Timmy originally, I don't think that when Timmy passed away, Drew ended up with it, was the way that happened. Cause Timmy had a trailer back three years ago, I don't know where it went.
I don't know, there used to be an old trailer back there, but didn't know for sure whose was.
So I motion with table this until we can get some more information together.
Well, I think we have to decide who's gonna get this information, and who we're gonna get it from, or which is all gonna sit here, so you're gonna get that from?
I'll get the stuff from the PVA, and from, I'll try to get the copies of the Murphy farm.
We got, well, and what Jared done, he's got a calculator, where he does our work, he's figured that road at thirty-eight inches thick of gravel, and it took fifteen loads, it's fifty-three hundred dollars, that three seventy-five load.
Size coal, she's.
Uh.
Size coal, she's.
The coal ride. I mean, we're probably looking at two thousand dollars for coal. And that's a one size coal, that's a thirty-six inch, thirty-six inch, I think it's a twenty-four in there off the top of my head, and it went down to the water.
It's gonna have to be, there's one too there, plenty of problems.
I'm just like, something's going on there today when I come down, because there's water running down the branch, but ain't nothing running across the road, so I'm a horse hill.
It's gonna remember that tile, and see, it's, it's getting worse and worse, and.
Yeah, it ain't even running out the tile, you can't even see it running down the ditch, it's.
I mean, you can see it, I didn't drive it, and that's why I told Regina the other day, I'm not gonna spend thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars on blacktop, and I come down there one morning, and my blacktop's gone.
Yeah.
I mean, I was, I was literally pissed completely out. And then there were ants getting, and I'm just like, I can't do this.
Jared, you say fifty-three or fifty-six, huh?
Fifty-six.
I believe it's fifty-six, when.
It wasn't fifty. Fifty, fifty-six, twenty-five.
So it is.
And that's eighty, you're.
Complete cost as to what it's gonna take to get the road, uh, to the blacktop ready, cause we've got the blacktop around. Once we get all the costs and get a plaque, then I think we can get something done. I think we're gonna have to know that, there's no way that nobody can make us make decisions. I think we're gonna have to know that, there's no way that nobody can make those, those decisions, and not know what you're looking at, I mean, I think that's understandable.
Sure.
Everybody's got another-
Well, I guess-
Complete cost, and know that we're-
I guess the one question that we have to know on mine, is, are we just looking at doing twelve foot wide, or are we set on twenty foot wide? I think somebody asked that question, won't go, what's the ordinance that says it has to be twenty foot wide?
I think Tyler checked that, he's the one that said it has to be twenty. We can find that out from Tyler, if you don't-
I don't think we've got it, honestly.
Uh, and sometimes, he said there must have been an ordinance or something that said to take a road into the city, because he read it from somehow, and I think that it had to be twenty foot wide, and it had to be blacktop, and then the city would take it in and maintain it, that would be wherever you bring.
That'd be an ordinance.
Had to be an ordinance, yeah, so we just find that ordinance, or, but he found it somewhere, so he would know when he got that.
Hmm, could be changed.
My road is not twenty foot wide?
I don't think Murphy Lane's twenty foot wide. I bet Bush, he'll be taking my dad gun fence.
It's a table one end, but I think when was that ordinance, because, because that big city street's twenty foot wide.
I'm not.
That's what I'm saying, there's things we've got to find out, and I know Tyler's not that, say that.
If we can go, if we can go to twelve foot, I mean, like I said, I'll get the gravel, I'll get everything ready, you pay for the pile, and the-
You'll pay for all the blacktop?
And I'll pay for-
All the blacktop? All the blacktop?
But we're gonna need to find that.
I'm not talking to you.
If it is an ordinance, there's nothing that says we can't change an ordinance.
No, hey, you were like-
I think-
You know.
I think that might be a little too restricted for us, honestly, to the choir.
Yeah, I mean, there's none of these city streets with twelve foot wide. Well, I know our new road's on the creek, it's eighteen foot wide, and it's twenty wide, I can, I can have a dump truck, meet the dump truck on that road, there's no issues at all, and we were asking-
It's tires going down Murphy Lane, you meet nothing, you can't stay.
That's what I'm saying, you need a lot of these roads, you need a car on, and you can't-
Somebody's gotta get off there, it's a little, that it ain't over fourteen, is it? Probably not, I, I didn't measure it, I was going through today when I was up there, and then I was gonna measure how wide Murphy was.
I'll find out tomorrow, I'll find out.
I was like, they're gonna come back, I bet, if, if it runs out.
Give the cost, but we'll let you know once we find this, what it is.
I'm gonna give the cost of the tile, and give the cost of the rock, and what we think, and estimate on what the rock will be.
And then we can, once we find that, we can, if the city wants to make an ordinance change, we could do that before this is, goes into effect, if that's the way the county decides to go.
And like I say, I'm here to be fair too, I'm not trying, uh-
So how much blacktop you gonna pay for?
It depends on how much rock and everything else.
Oh, you done said you'd pay for that, though.
I didn't pay.
What do you think that's for?
What do you think that's for?
Yeah.
How you not fair and sharing?
Oh, okay.
Okay, so Brian, we'll let you know once we find that tomorrow, and-
Yeah, I'll get my information back to you all tomorrow too, if it's not tomorrow, it may be Monday, I gotta leave tomorrow, so if I don't get done, we've got no PM, here we visit in the morning, and which you're gonna make sure of that.
Well, he's getting it all.
Once we get all that back in, then we'll look at what, if it is an ordinance, if we need to change something, or if we're gonna leave, and if we leave it, then we know we've got to do twenty foot, if that's the ordinance. If it's not, then-
And guys, I appreciate you all having this special meeting, and obviously, you don't have to do this, it can wait for the next meeting, I know Joe and Tom tomorrow. I don't want to put any extra burden, I know everybody's busy, but I do appreciate you all, the rest of us, I know it's got clarity from India, but I feel it has for me, and I feel it has for them.
I think there's a lot that nobody, really, it's brought down a lot of questions about all of it, that none of us knew for sure, if you know, if I can-
Let me ask this question off the subject, do you know how wide a sewer easement has to be?
I don't know if one of them-
You do? I think-
Eight foot, I think.
How much?
I think it's a hundred foot.
The total's eight or ten.
I'm supposed to grab one to go to Polara's, the, uh, place.
Have you talked to Lindsey Jake, the last video?
I need to talk to him.
Yeah, you can, I'll do the more of.
Because what it'll be along the back of the, uh, proper, along the mixture property lines, Jeff Warner's, yours, and come around.
And be behind that, my building?
Yes, and it'll be as, you know, it's the next lot, but I, it's okay, it's-
Except for Matthews?
Yeah, Polara, yeah. So, because the, uh, I swear not the, uh, Billy Inspector, whatever, health department makes them get easements, I don't have a survey, so I'm gonna have to kind of wing it.
We make a motion we, and Jared, so I think we can get third time's wings.
Oh, I know, man.
And we can get hold of the town, watch the ballgame.
Well, yeah, he all-
They are falling, they're missing.
He said, he said they, oh, they're three opposed. What about that?